Yep.
Good to go. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment, but just a reminder to everyone that the front end public comment is only for agenda items only. The back end of public comment will be for general questions. Okay, opened up to public comment. Anyone? All right, we'll close public comment and we'll move to our consent agenda, which will be A1 through D1. If you would like to pull anything out, have any questions, comments, we can entertain those. So can I have a motion to move the consent agenda? Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Any questions, concerns? Tom, can you use your mic, please?
Actually, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to remove item C, the agreement. C1, I guess.
Item C. Pull it out as a separate item. Do you have a question? If you have a question, maybe we can answer it.
Well, a question is, I asked for some changes to be made on it, and were those changes recognized in May?
Yes, so the questions that you had were, this was an extension of an agreement that was expiring. So we had someone come in for September 9th to the 21st. So the first bullet under the first section of that was to just adjust for those additional days. But this was an original contract, so we needed to just identify those additional days at the beginning of that contract.
That's correct, but in the original contract, it also stated that it ended August of 22.
Right, because that contract, we were extending because we had someone that was going out on a short leave of absence, and we needed somebody to cover that department. So that's what that was.
So when we utilize this in the future, those dates will be adjusted accordingly?
There's no future. This is, this is final. This contract ended on September 20th, I believe.
All right.
So it was just those additional, an additional week and a half or so.
In the future, if we choose to employ that same person again at that capacity, we will adjust those dates accordingly to show that it's-
It'll be a different agreement at that point. Yes.
It might be similar, but at least let's have it lined up.
Yep. Exactly.
I'm satisfied with the explanation. Thank you.
So we'll leave C in the consent agenda.
And just to be clear about process, in order to withdraw that, would that need a second also?
We didn't pull it out of consent, but when we did, if we do pull it out of consent, we're going to table it, then we're going to need a separate motion.
Thank you.
Yes. Currently, it was just a question by Tom regarding the language of the contract, and I believe he's satisfied with that, so we can move the consent agenda forward with a motion by Heather and a second by Camille. So if there's no other questions or concerns or comments regarding the consent agenda, we'll move it forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie.
So I believe in the audience, we have with us one, our tenure candidate. We will recognize her more fully in the spring at the tenure reception, but Harriet Meyer is with us this evening, so I want to give you a congratulations, Harriet.
And again, on behalf of the board, Harriet, we congratulate you for your tenure track appointment. I know I've said this in the past as sitting up here at this table. Granting tenure to a staff member is a million-dollar investment in the district. Maybe now it's a little bit more. This is probably going back several years. But I, you know, we take it seriously. We welcome you aboard. Hopefully, your career here is going to be full of enjoyment and be able to touch many of our students live. So congratulations, and we hope to see you here for quite some time. Okay.
I just wanted to quickly, within that consent agenda, we did accept the annual audit reports. I just wanted to congratulate the business office. I know that's a big undertaking on their part, so just to congratulate them and say thank you.
Well taken. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to our student rep. Haki.
So I don't have any notes today from the elementary and middle school. I emailed them and didn't get back, so I'm assuming all is well down at those buildings. But for the high school, Spirit Week is this week. Today was pajama day. Wednesday is twin day. Thursday is jersey day, and Friday is class colors day. And also on Friday, there will be a pep rally held outdoors for the homecoming game that is the same night against FDR. And the homecoming dance for all high school students is on Saturday from 6:30 to 9:30. Colleges are now coming in weekly, conducting visits with seniors and juniors. And the first session for a Taste of Success, which is a new name and replaces Lunch and Learn, will take place on October 20th with TRC Auto doing a presentation. Students will learn about the auto industry and be provided with a pizza lunch. And that is all I have.
Okay, any questions?
So this Lunch and Learn is a time to get local businesses in and different opportunities for students, and they're going to serve pizzas. So that's very cool. All right.
Yes, it's been resurrected since it was in action prior to COVID, but now they're going to resurrect it again.
Thank you.
I believe it was very successful. It's a great program. They even got, they even got me involved in it, Mike.
We're talking businesses and trade groups?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, and I believe if there are any local businesses or folks that want to come in and speak to students about a particular topic, they just should reach out to the high school principal, and he'll be more than happy to arrange for, I want to keep calling it a Lunch and Learn, because that's what the name was before, but another one of the sessions. Taste of Success session in the future.
Okay, moving on to Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Pupil Personnel, Dr. Boyd.
Good evening. Last Thursday, we held our AIS Elementary Open House. We had 49 parents in attendance, which was probably the highest number that I've seen in quite some time, which was nice to see. Parents were able to learn about entrance and exit criteria for AIS services. The staff handed out resources, and a lot of them included QR codes, so to ease, to help parents get right to the website and some of the tools and some of the resources that they were putting out there. So it was a good night to see that. At the last meeting, I mentioned a call from State Ed where we talked about sustainability from the ARPESR grants. So we finalized that. So Mr. Freer, Ms. Idell, and I will be on a conference call with them on October 24th to find out what ideas or possible funding that they may have for us moving forward once those grants expire. We were selected as part of an education stabilization fund monitoring review group, and this dates back to one of the original, what we would call a COVID grant, the CARES Act that came out first. So it's a review on kind of how districts are spending the money, talking about what happened, what they did with it, and reviewing steps moving forward on opportunities like this, hopefully not in that capacity of the reason why, but just in general. But we were assigned Group E, which won't occur for a full another year. So they put us into October of 2023, when that process will start. We have seen a decrease in our homeschool numbers. Prior to COVID, we were typically in the high 20s or low 30s. During COVID, those numbers went up into the 60s, and right now, we're in the mid 40s for our homeschool numbers. So we're seeing a little bit of a decrease. Some of the students coming back into the building. I was asked to be part of a teacher education advisory board, which Marist is running, which looks at new teacher preparation programs. So we're going to be meeting in November to talk about ways in which we'd like to see teachers prepared as they enter the teaching field. So I will bring back any information that comes out of those meetings. And beyond that, our observations will be starting this month. So excited to get into the classroom to see a lot of the new programs that we approved to be implemented this year.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Boyd? All right, I believe our superintendent's going to speak for Mr. Zimmer, who is out this evening.
Yeah, so I'll put it all into one. So Mr. Zimmer is apologizing that he wasn't able to be here this evening, but he wanted to let the board know that all administrators received their recertification training for observations on Wednesday, September 28th. That was done in a virtual format. We held another substitute training on Wednesday, October 5th, and we got more subs onto the sub list, which I believe you approved this evening. He's been working with the Panorama Company to get the Panorama survey prepared for a rollout. We believe that's going to roll out late next week. And then also, Mr. Zimmer, Mrs. Meyer, and Officer Brian Scott have been working on a standalone survey for the SRO program to get feedback from our community on the SRO. We tried to incorporate it into the Panorama, which I know we had spoken about in some previous meetings, but those questions are nationally normed that are in there. So to take that survey apart and add in our own questions was a little bit more laborious and would not give us, it would not norm it against the rest of the, there's not a question in that, in that particular survey, so it wouldn't norm it across the country. So they are working on getting a survey done that's done on Google Forms, I believe. So that we should see in the next week or so. But just, go ahead.
Question on that standalone survey. Who are the members of that?
It's Mr. Zimmer, Harriet Meyer, the head of our DEI committee, and Officer Brian Scott. They met last week. They're going to meet again this week to formalize and finalize that particular survey.
What is the purpose of that survey at this point in time?
Well, one of the things that was identified when we were talking about the district safety plan and adding this SRO into the plan was to make sure that all voices were heard. So creating that survey, now that he's been in the buildings and students have seen him and teachers have been working with him, we felt that it was a good time to get some feedback from those particular groups. We have an open format for anyone to send in public comment over the 30-day period, which ends on September 28th, but we really wanted to hear from the students and from the teachers, from the buildings, for the work that, or the relationships that are already being built.
So the open survey is October 28th, not September 28th, correct?
No, it ends October 28th. My-
Correct.
It went up September 28th.
So would this survey be disseminated prior to October 28th? So I don't follow the purpose of the survey. If it's open discussion regarding the safety plan and adding the SRO to the safety plan, how would this survey affect that if it's not disseminated prior to October 28th?
This particular survey is for students and for teachers. So the public comment, yes, students and teachers could go on the public comment as well.
Correct.
But we wanted to get the, the feedback from the folks that are seeing the SRO on a daily basis.
I'm just concerned that our SRO program is probably in its fourth or fifth week, and now we're sending out a survey. I thought that survey should have been sent out prior to the board implementing the SRO program, or now, currently, at least give the program maybe six months to feel the district and the staff, and then go out with the survey. I think four weeks, five weeks is somewhat premature to have a survey regarding the SRO program. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Well, just some thoughts. Usually, those two populations, both students and faculty, are so focused on the opening of school in September that a survey on top of that, I could understand why you would want that delayed. But it, you know, you can use surveys in a lot of different ways, and quite frankly, when we talked about what's the actual program and how's that going to interface with the different buildings, this survey might have questions or information that help inform that and help plan that through. Because again, we only have the one right now, and we know that in the long term, we'd like to have three in each building. So, you know, I could see in different points if management needs to put a survey out to help inform those next steps. It makes sense to me, anyway.
I was going to add that I agree with what you said, Al, that it would have been nice to have this before we did the contract. And I know that's something that I advocated for, just trying to get some voice, but it didn't happen. But I think having some good baseline data, we're talking about culture and climate with the Panorama, so I think this is a good opportunity just to kind of link that with what Panorama does. I'm hoping that there's opportunity for families also to give input as to what they might want to see the SRO program, or maybe, not entirely what they want to see, but what activities. I'm not sure there's opportunity for adults to get involved, parents, guardians, with that respect. And then I just had, with the Panorama, last time, I think it went out during COVID?
I believe so.
We were at home, so I know that as far as response from families was not where it needs to be. So just curious, what will be different this time to get more?
Well, one of the things that, we're actually taking an idea from the Arlington District. I live in the Arlington School District, and they got a postcard to the families with a QR code that took them to their survey. So that was one of the things that Bill was investigating with getting that postcard out. But we didn't want it, because we have postcards and other mailings going out right now, we didn't want it to be, and quite honestly, political things that are ending up in people's mailboxes, we didn't want it lost in the shuffle. So, so that's something that he's working with Holly Brooker on to get that out. So it, that probably will not, the survey will be open for a while, a couple of weeks. So we thought that that, that postcard would go out probably just, just prior to the election, so that the postcard ends up in mailboxes just after that. And then there would be the email from the, from the, from the school district as well. But as far as the SRO survey, you know, we don't have to do that at this point. If we would like to put some more time, that would, that would be fine. It was just, it was felt sort of like what Mr. Pecasius was saying, seeing what, what things people had questions about so that we could develop that program even further. But I understand your point as well, that some may not have a, a true understanding at this point. So, you know, if the board would like to put the brakes on that one, we can, we can definitely do that, and we can revisit it, you know, after the holidays or in the early spring.
I'm going to open that up to the board and get their feedback. Number one, do you think it's too premature right now? And if not, would you like to see the survey questions prior to them going out?
Yeah, I would like to see-
I would like to see the questions as well.
Sure.
So you're, you're okay with the survey going out now? That's, that's the first question we got answered.
No.
Are you okay with the survey going out at this point? If you are, then would you like to see the questions?
Personally, I think that it might be more beneficial if we wait a little bit. We have a lot going on between the Capitol budget vote, the Panorama survey, the program just starting. I, my personal opinion is, I think it depends how your questions are geared, right? Whether we're looking for feedback of what we anticipate from the program, then maybe now. But I would think more so, what I'd be interested in is how we feel it's going, and I think that would be kind of down the road a little bit.
Sure.
Agreed. I would like to see it wait and like hold on it, and I would like to see questions also before they go out.
Definitely can get you the questions beforehand. But I definitely, I know Mr. Zimmer and Ms. Meyer and Officer Scott spoke about it last week, but I can bring that information back, and we can, we can hold up on that for, for the time being.
Tom? Yeah, I would also like to wait and would also like to view the question-
Sure.
The questionnaire, the survey, whatever we want to call it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Camille?
I'm okay with it happening to inform programs, because we didn't have the opportunity to get that feedback from the community. We just heard about safety, but not necessarily what we want to see the SRO do. So I'm okay with it to inform the work. As far as feedback, I agree that's better to wait. If it's just for how, how is he doing, let's wait. But informing program, I think is essential to get that input from the families and the students and staff.
So what I'm hearing is we're going to wait on the SRO survey. Just a point that you should take that I think waiting is going to also benefit our discussion in January and February regarding the budget. Because if we get positive feedback from this survey and any areas that we have to tweak, that's just going to help us creating the budget moving forward if we're going to continue the program and some possibly hire some, some more individuals to serve as the SRO program.
I mean, at this point, you know, I would like to hear too what programs are happening with the SRO. So we're not going to do a survey to hear, but I don't know, other than what I hear from my own son as to what's happening with the SRO. So that's, I know he's here, but what is he doing while he's here? So that's something that I would like to know sooner than later.
We can get that information for you for the next meeting.
Do you still-
I still have to get. So I have my own now. Just a reminder, the Capitol Project, we are in the last week of having that information out. I just, I want to publicly thank the HSA for their Stuff the Bus event that took place at Hannaford last weekend. They, they brought in, the community was so generous, we were able to help two local food banks, and I was having, I had a station there for folks to, to get information about the, the Capitol Project. Just a reminder that this coming Friday is our homecoming game. The Pop Warner cheerleaders and younger football players will attend with families. Our newsletter should be in mailboxes. I believe it hit over the weekend, so hopefully folks are finding that information useful in making their decision. Today is the deadline for requesting an absentee ballot if they want, if folks want them mailed to them. If anyone in the audience wants an absentee ballot, we have applications. Lisa has them with her. She can take that this evening and get you a ballot mailed to you. October 17th is the deadline for requesting an absentee ballot. If the voter or their designee will pick up the ballot, and that would be picking up the ballot at, here at the, at the high school or in the district office. And a reminder, the vote, excuse me, is October 18th from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the band room. I have plenty of these flyers left. I know, I see smiling faces, because I have talked to many of the folks in the audience multiple times. So if anyone needs an additional flyer or needs more information, just a reminder that we have a dedicated email address. It's capitalproject@highland-k12.org. To date, we have not received any emails to that site, but that might be because we've been at locations throughout the district. I did get one question at the elementary PTA meeting this past week about energy and work that we were doing in the district to save energy, and have we looked at alternative energy sources? Also, I had one question about whether any research has been done on the long-term negatives, if there are any, about runoff water from a field such as a turf field. So I am crafting a response to the, the person who gave that question. I did reach out to them again today. There were a lot of things that were talked about. This person talked about projects at, in, in other places, so I wanted more detail, and I'll share that information with the board. But most importantly, share it with the design team, so that when they're looking at our project, should it pass next week, they can take some of those, you know, thoughts into consideration as they're designing the, the full final plan. As you know, and I mentioned a few moments ago, the district safety plan and SRO contracts were put up on September 28th for the required 30-day comment period. That will end on October 28th, and we will have a community forum on Tuesday, November 15th, at the beginning of the regularly scheduled board meeting for that plan to be readopted. And we've already discussed that piece. Just a reminder to board members, there are three events left. On the roadshow, the varsity football homecoming game this Friday night, 7:00 PM. Saturday morning, the town soccer camp here at the turf, the small turf field where the tennis courts were. And then on Monday evening, the HMS PTA meeting. A reminder from the high school about the Brooks Brothers barbecue fundraiser. I sent that to all of your emails over the weekend, but it's also on our website. We did that, and I believe, sorry, I had notes everywhere. That's all I have.
Any questions for our superintendent?
Yeah, Joel, the Brooks Brothers barbecue, that's to benefit what group?
The Highland High School PTSA.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That was, that was very successful the last time, and it was very good also. So thank you.
One comment I have, I'd like to publicly thank Joel Freer for his hard work and effort putting forward to inform the community of our Capitol Project. Every time I look at Joel, I see the reflection of our flyer and that roadshow diagram that he has off his glasses. But I, I think there's nobody, you know, that's put the time and effort into promoting the project than Joel has, and I want to commend him for that. He's been at every activity since the start of school, even prior to school. I think we had one before opening day with a picnic for the football players. And Joel's been at every one of those events, and along with the rest of the administrative staff, of course, but he's been the spearhead behind promoting the Capitol Project and informing our community of both Proposition 1, what it entails, and also Proposition 2. So I like to personally thank, and I believe the board also would like to thank Joel for his effort in trying to move this project forward. So thank you, Joel. Is there any questions for the superintendent? All right, under Board of Education, just a couple reminders. We're a short three, four months away from our budget process, and that'll come upon us quite quickly. So I like to have everyone start thinking about the budget. In particular, I don't know if that's me, and, is it? In particular, that care money that we received is going to sunset at the end of this school year, and we've increased our social workers, we increased mental health capacity, and some of AIS services. So we're going to possibly lose those staff members when this money does sunset at the end of June of 2023. So we have some real serious discussions that have to take place in regards to the budget and how we can fund those programs moving forward and keep that level of the social, emotional process going in our school district. So that's very, you know, it's, it's a concern, especially the mental health and the social end of it, coming out of a pandemic where there's a lot of issues, and we need that support. So we have to keep that in mind. So we have to keep that in mind. And also, we spoke about it the last meeting in regards to possibly the district being able to fund educational trips. So I need you to start thinking about putting in place a procedure and first have a discussion if we're going to move forward in that direction, and then developing the procedures as a board to implement. That's what I have under new business in the Board of Education. Anyone else have any new business? Old business? Okay. Anything for the good and welfare of the district? I will now open up the backend of our public comment. Just a reminder that, that public comment, there's a bullet under public comment on our, front of our agenda, the fourth bullet down, that I want everyone to be aware that the board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. With that said, I'll open it up to public comment. Please state your name. I'll come up to the microphone, state, state your name, so our district clerk can record that.
Hi, my name is Jenny Wilklo Riley.
Up, yes. Got it? You got it?
Jenny Wilklo Riley. I can go?
Yep.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Jenny Wilklo Riley, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of many parents who are currently having or have had issues getting their children the services that they are entitled to. I have the unique experience of having two children with IEPs. One was given everything she needed from the very beginning, and the other was denied everything he needed. I have seen firsthand the difference that a good, comprehensive IEP can make, and I've seen firsthand the damage that the failure to help a child in need can do. I, like many of these parents, have had many sleepless nights, have cried way too many tears, and have spent tens of thousands of dollars getting something that by law my child should have been given from the beginning. In my worst moments, my mind kept going back to thinking about the parents and children that didn't have the money to fight or the knowledge of their own rights. I knew in those moments that when my own fight was over, I would be back to help them. I truly understand and appreciate the difficulties that the special ed department faces, the funding, the staff shortages, and many times the lack of fully understanding many invisible disabilities. The recent proposal for over $4 million to be spent on a football field, though, has left many special ed parents feeling like just about anything is more important than their children's basic education needs. I don't believe in complaining without offering a solution, or at least the start to one. I don't know all of the right answers, but I believe strongly that if people from every side of this issue meet, some great progress will happen. I'm proposing that a committee be formed with the special ed parents and members of the special ed department, teachers and administrators, so we can bring all of our suggestions to the table and make meaningful, meaningful progress in fixing some big issues. There has to be a way to make the children's education a priority. The board is not aware of the challenges that we have faced and are still facing, and that needs to change. I hope you can consider allowing us to work with the district, so the parents coming behind us don't have to feel the helplessness that we have had to feel trying to get our children the help they need it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jonathan Quinones. I'm the father of five children, four of which attend Arlington Central School District, and one who attends the Highland Elementary School. I've come before you tonight to ask you guys to find in your hearts to maybe make some time to adjust the amount of time allotted for my student who attends the elementary school to eat lunch. I don't feel that he's being given the adequate amount of time. He's expressed it to me. He is showing signs at home during dinner that he's performing issues that kind of relate to anxiety relations as to having to leave the dinner table in a rush. I take it very serious when it comes to the way that it affects my child's mental stability. I've spoken with John Matthews, Director of Food Services with the school district. He agrees with me that he believes the students be provided some extra food time to consume. I followed up with the principal, Mr. McCormick. He actually took the liberty to sit with my child on Friday to get an aroundabout amount of time documented for me, so that way I could get some insight as to what's actually going on. Is my child specifically maybe just not paying attention, or is, you know, it just really not enough time? From the open house I attended the other day, I was informed by my student's teacher that the lunch period is about approximately 40 minutes, 20 minutes off the backend, which is immediately designated to recess time. No problem, I believe in, with five boys, they need as much energy burned as possible. Makes sense to me. But I also believe in that they need the proper amount of time to sit down and consume their food correctly without having to feel like they're being rushed. And it's something that I would like to address and hopes that maybe together as a community, we can work something out. From what I've understood, from the people I've spoken with and the CDC guidelines, the scheduling of how the school periods break up is 99.9% of the principal at hand's discretion. Not sure how much, you know, that goes as far as what I'm being given as far as information, but I'm here to ask you, please, from what the CDC says, 30 minutes is what's recommended for eating time, 20 of which is uninterrupted. If you're taking 20 minutes off the back of my child's lunch for recess, that gives him 20 minutes left. From what Mr. McCormick reported me today, he was able to calculate on Friday, my son sat for approximately 18 minutes before he was dismissed to recess. And that was given to the understanding of me that he had about two spoons maybe left of each of the courses on his plate. And my concern is, after speaking with my son today, who at seven years old, he kind of doesn't know to filter the truth much, he, he kind of let me know that today he was given more time than normal, or Friday he was given more time than normal while the principal sat with him to consume his food. So he felt that he was able to consume more on that day than normal when he's at lunch. So that's all that I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment.
I just have a, I think a clarification of my own understanding. It's general enough, because when you talk about students with disabilities and IEPs and all these types of things, there's a high deal, a great deal of confidentiality and discretion. However, my understanding is if a parent doesn't agree with the services, or there's some communication, or they're at odds with leadership in the school, isn't there something called an impartial hearing that addresses that? I don't know if Dr. Boyd, you could shed any more light on what that process is, just for public knowledge?
Yeah, so in, when IEPs are sent out, there's a document called procedural safeguards that goes with it that outlines some of the opportunities when, when there's disagreement.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, for a motion to go into executive session for personnel reasons, we will not be coming back out to a public session. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Janine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And thank you all for coming out this evening. Appreciate it.